If she does that on camera, she knows what I will do to her on camera.
You were so upset about that egg going missing.
That is why...
Jen, the temptation was too great. The temptation was too great.
You should have just said, you should have just put it in your bag and left it. Nobody would have known. I can't help but feel like you were antagonizing as you wanted that thing to go missing.
I think she did.
Deep down? The font on page 82?
Yeah, I mean, I just kind of figured it out until I...
The font is different.
Until I can't.
Tom, it looks like there was some words cut off on page 84.
Is everybody ready?
Sure.
You can start any time.
Thanks.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting Wednesday, February 4th, 2015. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV as well as being livestreamed. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe, caring, learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. Correspondence, Katie?
There is no correspondence.
Okay. Are you going to be giving...
The budget's the update.
The budget is the update. The last finance subcommittee, is that going to be part of the budget presentation?
Yeah, we have to have the budget.
Okay. So, the main item of tonight is the FY16 school budget presentation, which Marie Doyle will be giving to us. And the administrative team is present to answer any questions that we may have. So, with that, I will turn it over to you. I'm going to move seats so that everyone can see.
Okay. Don't leave your rag.
I'm not taking my rag.
Okay.
Hateful, hateful woman.
Thank you very much. I, first of all, like to recognize the administrative team. We have our principals here. We have our technology director, pupil services director, as well as our assistant superintendents. We've spent the past couple of months formulating a budget that will be presented to you tonight. I think the budget process takes months to do because we're looking at what is working, what's not working. We analyze student achievement, and we develop a budget around what we think is best for the children. When we come in with a budget, it's always much higher than what we feel the town can accommodate, so there are always adjustments to be made along the way. So therefore, we'll be sharing some of that with you this evening. We always start off with our vision, and that is to make sure that students completing an education in Long Meadow will be fully capable of excelling in the global community. Joseph, there you are in one of our slides with Mr. Landers.
I think that was the day of the play.
I think you were talking about cell phones.
Oh, perfect. He was getting a press pass.
Oh, that's it. Next is our mission. Our mission is to prepare all levels of learners to achieve to their full potential, to cultivate confident, critical thinkers and problem solvers, to develop the skills and habits of mind for lifelong learning, and to contribute to a global community and to maintain a safe environment. The both vision and mission go back to when the strategic plan was formed by a committee of about 30 people, and that was done about four years ago. Our students excel in learning. Recently, the 2015 NICH Best Schools report came out, and Long Meadow fared extremely well. They ranked us 19th in the state out of 401 districts, and that places us in the top 5% according to data that they collect, as well as feedback from parents, students, and former graduates, as well as staff members. Blueberry Hill came in 82nd, Center 85th, Wolf Swamp 133rd, and that's out of 1,171 elementary schools. Glenbrook came in 45th, and Williams 38th, out of 329 middle schools. And Long Meadow High School placed 19th out of 296 high schools. This is, again, just one form of data that shows you the success we have in educating our students. One of the data points we look at very carefully is what our students do when they leave us, what colleges they go to, how successful they are, what jobs they end up in. We have everything from doctors, lawyers, peoples in the, students in the fields of art, music, financial advisors, all the way down to, most recently, Senator Eric Lesser, a former graduate of Long Meadow High, who is now a state senator in Massachusetts. One of the goals is to help our students understand that as leaders, they have a responsibility to give back to the community, and they enrich that with numerous community service activities, and we'll talk about that later. Our students really take very seriously that they have a privileged life and that they give back, making both Long Meadow and the extended community better places for everyone to live. So how are Long Meadow students successful in so many ways? And what have we looked at over the past couple of years within the district that we think has improved it? We've looked at student services restructuring, and part of that is to bring our special ed students back home to district schools. We've saved the district over $750,000 to date by doing so. We have many curriculum initiatives underway that we'll talk about, where we have a review cycle, where we're annually looking at ways to review curriculum and improve it. We've increased collaboration among schools. The middle schools now work as one team when they look at curriculum and make decisions. They have common schedules where students are following the same five-day plan. We have common data implementation at the elementary and middle school level. We've expanded Long Meadow High School's wellness classes, and we've had great advances in the teaching of literacy in both elementary and middle schools. In addition, we've added AP Economics to the high school. We now have online Mandarin offered for our students at the high school. Our technology integration continues to expand. We have BYOD at the high school. That means Bring Your Own Device. And this year, we'll be looking at offering opportunities for one-to-one instruction at the middle school and possibly 4th and 5th grade in a year or two. We've expanded our ELL, that's English Language Learners, due to the number of students coming to the district whose first language is not English. We've increased communication through newsletters, public forums, and more. We have an online agreement with the LEA, that's the Teachers Association, where we are now in collaboration with offering courses that students may not take at Long Meadow High, they may take them online. Mandarin was our first foray into that area. We've also expanded professional development opportunities. Chris Collins spearheaded a team last year of middle school teachers, which actually developed their own program using the expertise of our teachers to educate other teachers. We've also implemented Wind Block, which is our response to RTI, so that students are receiving the support they need, as well as offering challenge to students who have already mastered curriculum. So what does the restructuring of student support look like? The key is early intervention focus. We're taking a look at what students need, and we're using data to see who's achieving and who's not. The special ed programs have been implemented in place throughout the district at many of our schools. We have special programs in a variety of areas where students need it. We've opened a behavioral program. We're looking at autistic needs, as well as we're looking at cognitively delayed programs. By bringing students home and not busing them to other school districts, it saved over $750,000, and I believe our students are receiving a far better education being in our neighborhood schools. The Wind Blocks are providing time for support. This means less pullout from subjects like math and literacy. It means more support for students so they can get a double dose of instruction. We see higher student achievement, and I'll show you some of that data momentarily. We're developing challenging curriculum. We're developing, this year will be another initiative this summer, to provide time for teachers to continue to do challenge work for students. And we have hired interventionists in math and literacy that are reaching our children in both elementary and middle schools. In the curriculum initiatives, several are going on. As you know, literacy, it's been a five-year study, and it's five years of working at the elementary level, and the middle school started last year. We've implemented Reader's Workshop from FY12 to 14. This year, it's Writer's Workshop. Phonics was already implemented in grades K to 1. Next year, it will be Word Study and Phonics, looking at programs in grades 2 to 5. Middle school balanced literacy started last year with Reader's Workshop, and we'll be expanding that to look at Writing Workshop as well. In math, we're piloting a new elementary program. The elementary math committee actually started five years ago, where we had a team looking at what the best practices were. At that time, we were using Investigations and Scott Foresman. While the district said that we're using Investigation, there's still been some confusion around that, so the team met again this past year. Over the summer, a district team of elementary teachers wrote to actually do benchmarks for each grade to outline what the curriculum was. This year, Susan Bertrand's been spearheading a team of elementary teachers that are looking at different programs. They're going to be piloting those over the next few months, and we hope to have a decision by the end of the year so that we can purchase materials out of this budget. We're also hoping to make that decision so that we can provide rich staff development at the end of the year as well over the summer before teachers return to their classrooms. The middle school math review is completed. The teachers were able to do that two years ago. They picked out, they piloted and picked out new materials that are in line with the Common Core. In the middle school in particular, the curriculum needed to be compacted. It really was an upgrade in expectations for students in middle school for our top-level math students. In high school, there is more realignment going on because of Common Core and SAT testing. The teachers are cognizant of the fact that the test is changing, and they need to compress some of the courses into one in order to have students prepared. Therefore, new texts and new courses will be put in place for next year so students are ready to succeed on the SAT. There are many other curriculum initiatives underway. PE and Health was reviewed last year, it's continuing this year. We've looked at incorporating things like yoga and wellness courses. The high school in particular has had rave reviews about the new wellness courses put in for students. In social studies, there was a review last year. They're looking, this year, piloting, purchasing materials. They're looking at Discovery Social Studies, and if any of you are familiar with the Discovery Education for Science, that's receiving rave reviews from our science teachers. At the middle school, this is similar. It's an online course where you can differentiate reading expectations. It gives you all kinds of activities and resources. So we'll know for our teachers if that's the way we're going to go by the end of the year. The middle school will implement, hopefully, this new program in 1516. And elementary reviews will start in 1516 or 1617. Music was reviewed last year and completed. Technology is well underway. This has, again, been a five-year plan under the direction of Kevin Loranda, our Director of Technology. In my five years here, we've seen massive growth, and we should be extremely proud of the work that's been done in that area. We've gone from a small-time district to a district where we have broadband so that teachers can do livestreaming in class, they can use materials online. Our Discovery Ed teachers using Science are able now to access that, not to have to download materials. We now have BYOD at the high school, so students who would like to can bring their own technology and have it used in class with teacher's permission. We've increased the number of electronic whiteboards. We're grateful to Leaf, who's made a massive investment in bringing them into our classrooms at the elementary and middle schools. And thanks to the building project, the high school has had a significant number in most classes. Technology curriculum is under review again because the five-year plan developed by Kevin and the team a few years ago is already completed, and we're now on to the next step. Again, we have the online learning agreement with the LEA, and we will talk about expanding digital learning initiatives this year. I think one thing to note is our partnership with Middlebury College, who is renowned for their work in rural languages, and that's we're partnering with Rural Language for the teaching of Mandarin. And we're trying to use this type of model when we expand our online opportunities for our high school students and possibly even our middle school students. We have much more collaboration among schools. One of the school committee's goals was to make sure that schools are doing the same thing, and we have similar expectations for a student, no matter what elementary school they go to or what middle school they go to. We've worked on common assessments. Ames Web has now been placed into operation in all elementary school and middle schools. We have common midterms and finals at the high school, where students in different algebra courses take the same midterms and finals, as well as other courses. We've increased transition planning. We have 8th grade teachers meeting with 9th grade teachers to talk about what students need. We also are talking about curriculum, what is the expectation of a 9th grade when they get to the high school, so 8th grade teachers know how to prepare them. We're looking at talking more with, between our 5th and 6th grade teachers, because we see that as a great time of stress for students, and people worry about, parents in particular, how the experience is going to be at the high school. All of our research, all of our data, when we look at academic success, kids really soar and flourish in the middle schools, but there's still that worry of 5th grade parents and teachers, so we're working on transition plans there. We continue to look at preschool to kindergarten to make sure that's successful and the models are similar. We now have common middle school schedules, and again, professional development opportunities continue to expand with teachers leading professional development for their colleagues. So what's the future look like? We'll continue to stay on track with much of what we've just discussed. We're going to be looking at science soon. Kevin and I already had a meeting with a company about robotics, how we can infuse that into our after-school enrichment program, as well as possibly putting it into the new technology standards that are being worked on in the elementary school and middle schools. Online learning should expand. The Special Programs Committee is looking at a three-year plan where we can supplement the curriculum, we can have parent programs and student programs. Again, AP Economics will be starting next year. The literacy continues to be refined with phonics and word study. We will be looking at the preschool curriculum and reviewing that to make sure that it's matching and that it's meeting our goals and our students are being successful. And one-to-one computing will continue to be a goal of ours. So how do we know that what we're doing is working? We look at the data continually to assess our success and to see if our students are making the progress that is expected. This chart shows you the SAT scores for our high school students, and I think that you can see they excel across the board. We take a look nationally, just Long Meadow compared to Massachusetts, which is the highest ranking in the country, we're well above Massachusetts' average. And when you take a look at our scores as compared to nationally, we certainly soar. You should note that the SAT combined score of 1707 is the highest that Long Meadow has ever gotten, since the new scoring system was established in 2006. So kudos to our high school students, our high school staff, Tom Landers, and formerly Larry Birdy for really helping our students excel. Advanced placements are tests that students take in order to gain entry into college. We had 201 students take a total of 449 AP exams. This is an important statistic, because when they look at best high schools in the state or the country, they're often looking to see how many students actually take an AP exam. 89.4%, almost 90%, scored three or above on this test that is on a scale of 1 to 5. There were 55 federal Presidential Academic Excellence Awards in the class of 2014. We have 26 Advanced Placement Scholars, 45 Advanced Placement Scholars with Honors of Distinction, and nine Advanced Placement National Scholars. These are just statistics that it's a dream to be a superintendent in a district where so many students score so highly on advanced placement testing. Another way that we look at the data is we review the MCAS. We always compare how we did this year to last year. We take a look at target areas that we feel students should be improving upon. But the Boston Globe comes out with a ranking every single year, and we compare it to other middle schools. This year, for 2014, the Boston Globe ranked us in the following categories: Grade 8 and 7 ELA, Grade 8 and 7 Math, and Grade 8 Science. Please note that the DESE says there are 329 middle schools in the Commonwealth, and you can see that we scored exceptionally high across the board in all areas. We're going to show you some data quickly about Ames Web. This is the new tool that we're using. I think that the school committee's heard a lot about RTI and the Wind Block. RTI is Response to Intervention. It is getting students extra help before they end up falling so far behind they end up in special education. Ames Web is a tool that we're using with all students at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, and students who are experiencing any kind of difficulty or we believe are lagging behind are also tested at other points through the year. If you take a look, this year, we tested all the students, and you can see that for Grade 2 here at Wolf Swamp, we started off in the fall with 17.6 in the yellow category. Those are those that were not meeting the benchmark for the grade level. They've been during the Wind Block going out to see the interventionists, they've been getting extra help and support, and so far, we've captured several of them, and we're down to only 8.2 of them that are in the critical area. If you take a look at the red block, those are the students with learning disabilities that are in special education in a given class. So we're making significant progress. I'm quickly going to go through some other slides that show you what's happening at other grade levels. Here's 3rd grade at Center. We see growth. It's gone from 17.5 of the kids in danger down to 11.4. 5th grade at Blueberry, we had 32.7 in a critical area, and we're down to 20.3. So our investment in the literacy specialist and the math specialist is really paying off. These are students that would have been in danger of ending up in special education, where they would have fallen so far behind, it would have taken them years to get them out of the hole. So we're very pleased with the success that we're seeing in the Wind Block. 7th grade math computation, we're finding the students are doing very well. Problem solving's another area we have a test for, but here's Glenbrooks. And then here's Grade 6 Reading Comprehension at Williams. We had 21% in the danger zone, and now it's down to 14% thanks to interventions. The other data point we look at is the MCAS, and this just shows you how we compare to the state. The orange line is Long Meadow, the gray line behind it is the state. The one thing that you'll see across the board is that we're outperforming the state in regular education in all areas. From class to class, you'll notice the data goes from 2010 to 2014. You'll occasionally see a dip because our cohort's very slightly, but again, we're comparing ourselves to the state to make sure that our students are achieving above expectations. Here's Grade 4 ELA. You notice the state's also in a downward trend. ELA in Grade 3, we've been doing some data analysis because we think our students can do a little bit better in that area. Grade 4 Math, again, there was a dip, but it's leveling off right now. Grade 4 ELA, we see that the students are performing much better. The adjustments we've made there are paying off. Grade 5, there was a significant dip. Again, we're looking at the math. We've got new benchmarks that were done this year, and we're looking at a new program. Math continues to be an area that we've struggled with at the elementary school over the past five years plus since I've been here, so it's really time for a new curriculum and a new program. Grade 5 ELA held its own. Grade 6 Math, if you take a look, that we're above the 80th percentile with proficient advanced, that's very strong in the math area. Grade 6 ELA, it's up in the mid-80s. Grade 7 Math, up above the 80th percentile, very strong. Grade 7 ELA, up to, above 60%, which for the state is good, although we'd like to see more students in the proficient and advanced. Grade 8 Math, almost up to 80%. Grade 8 ELA, again, well above the state. Grade 10 Math hovers up, it's gone up into the 90s and just below it. Again, our students finished very strong with the Grade 10 MCAS. And Grade 10 ELA, we're at about 99% proficient or advanced. With Response to Intervention, I think we've talked a lot about this this year, so it's a quick review. It's what I need, it's targeted instruction. The goal is to reduce the number of special education referrals, cutting back our costs. I think it's about 33% of our school budget is funding special education. We'd like to see more students getting what they need in regular education, reducing that piece of the budget so that it's evenly distributed for all the children. We've had special education referrals by staff decreased from last year to this year by 19% because students are getting what they need during the Wind Block with the RTI model. We also are using during the Wind Block interdisciplinary studies like Water for Wassalala, which is a study of water systems in Africa. The students actually send money over to help them build water drain, water piping, so that the communities can get water instead of using the polluted water where they're sick and dying from it. We do progress monitoring through the Ames Web and other measures that I just showed you, and we're working on challenge and extension work for our kids who are at or above grade level. Again, some of the district initiatives we talked about, Chinese, economics, elementary math, aligning the math curriculum to the Common Core, balanced literacy, we'll be looking, high school history, we're looking at that right now. They've been, they made modifications last year, there was a review cycle in social studies last year, and what they're doing right now is looking at new texts for the high school to purchase. We are still using the Ames Web Benchmark, which was a new initiative, and we have common schedules at the middle school. The special ed restructuring is successful, and we are almost completely aligned with the Common Core in most subject areas. In addition, this year, we have a Special Programs Committee. It's comprised of about 25 parents, teachers, and administrators. Shelley Warren, who's the Substance Abuse Counselor at the high school, is also co-chair of the committee with me. We're looking to develop a three-year plan to work with parents, students, and staff to help make our children healthier. We have elementary, middle, and high school subcommittees that are working on possible presentations. A survey was done, as many of you know. The data has just come back. The committee has reviewed it. The results are going to go to the administrative team. I'm meeting with them next week. We're inviting our guidance counselors, our assistant principals, as well as our administrative team to take a look at the results, to have them offer their insight and suggestions, and then I'll bring that feedback back to the Special Programs Committee. Once we identify areas of need, then we're going to work on developing programs. So, what have been our accomplishments? Common data analysis, common schedules, inter-school professional development. We didn't talk about the new website development, which is district-wide. That was another initiative that the school committee asked. We come up with some common formats, it was easier for parents to do that. We're working on a district calendar right now, and that should be up and running in the next month. We've upgraded the phone system in all the schools. We've updated computer labs at the middle school. Some of those pieces of equipment were over five years old. We've committed, we've finished curriculum committee work in math, ELA, and social studies, resulting in new curriculums, and we've introduced the DDMs and the teacher evaluation system, which took a bulk of work last year. We've had many community connections, which are very important to us. We have the Common Core presentation. I'm having superintendent forums this year. We're continuing with TIES, which is Technology and Education Showcase. We've had public forums on transportation, and there'll be more. The Special Programs Committee, community surveys, newsletters, and we're planning a senior citizen event again for this spring, where we will invite them in to hear a musical performance and have lunch, as that was deeply appreciated by our seniors last year. Community service continues to be highly valued throughout the district. These are just some of the many, many, many projects that our students are involved with: Pennies for patients, Birthday Wishes, Helping Hands Lunch Program, Book Food and Clothing Drives, Ray of Hope for Breast Cancer, Gray House Project, Jump Rope for the Heart Association, Water for Wassalala, fundraiser for service dogs for vets, Gingerbread Houses for Soldiers' Homes, Stroll for Strength, community service learning courses and clubs, Key Club, Long Meadow Days, Leaf, Best Buddies and Toys for Tots. So now we'll get down to the numbers. What are the factors that are driving the budget process this year? The strategic plan always drives it because we continue to look at the things that we've said this is important, we need to continue planning. Literacy and math have dominated a lot of our work over the past several years. The analysis of student learning and achievement continues to have us make modifications, for example, putting in interventionists in the elementary and middle schools. We look at areas for improvement, technology, which is a great tool for learning, has been implemented and will continue to be. We look at mandates that come from the state, the DESE continually, from the Common Core Assessment, Educator Evaluation, et cetera. We have contractual obligations, and we have programming to meet the needs of all of our Going the wrong way. So what does the budget look like? I'll start with the overview of the numbers and then delve down at the details for you. If you take a look in FY15, this current year's budget, it was $34,785,447. A level service budget is one where you keep everything the same and you just raise it for the cost of living expectations. If we were to do a cost of just a level service budget, it would increase our budget by $1,600,000. We realized that asking for $1,600,000 was a lot, because the town's total increase is $1,300,000. So we've worked with town officials, we met with Steve and Crane, we met with Richard Foster. Janet's been working offline with Richard to go back and forth on what was possible, what we could ask for.
That 1.6 that you mentioned, that's based on the current contract as negotiated, 2% increase across the board for all units?
The 1.6 is based on whatever information we have today. We have not, we are in negotiations, we have not settled.
It's not based on, except for the current contract?
So our revised proposed budget for FY16 is to ask for an increase from the general fund of $757,143 over FY15. The total budget increase is only $555,790, because some of the grants were reduced, and that is where you that is where you're coming up with the difference between what we're asking the town for and what the actual increase to the budget is. So again, we're asking the town for approximately $750,000 over last year's budget, which is far less than a level service budget. So we have general fund grants, special revenues totals. This is in both the budget booklet and the slideshow information that you have there. Tom's given us all the numbers. What were the final numbers, the revised budgets in FY '15, what's proposed, and what the difference is? You can see that the grants are reduced by about $35,000, special revenues are down about $166,000.
Next question?
Yes.
So I noticed that we have a reduction in our IDA grant. What are we attributing that to?
Tom?
We try to look at historical figures. I mean, all of our special revenues, we really won't know what the funds will be, grants and/or fee-based programs until the year actually starts. So we look at trend data to use a best guess estimate at this point, and then we'll revise the FY '16 budget once the actual awards are here.
Is that the same reason we're attributing a, what is it, a hundred and something thousand dollar reduction in circuit breaker?
There's about an $85,000 reduction in circuit breaker.
Are we attributing that to less out-of-district tuitions?
We have reduced expenses related to programs or students that qualify for reimbursement, so therefore, we'll be spending less, so we'll receive less reimbursement.
So we're not just, we're not assuming any reduction in the state's allocation percentage?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for right now.
This is also in both your booklets and slideshow packets. This is budget by fund, how much is spent on general fund, circuit breaker, Metco, school choice, regular ed grants, special ed grants, and other revenue sources. You can see that the majority of the budget, 90.9% of it, comes from the general fund. And where does it go? 76% goes to staff salaries, 19% goes to contracted services, and 4% goes to supplies and materials. If you want a further breakdown, we have a proposed budget by location. It shows you administration, instructional development, pupil services, technology, maintenance, and it breaks it down by each of the schools as well. One area that we've been trying to increase is instructional development because in terms of training our teachers, we've always tried to use what extra money's were in the budget, and we're looking to try and build aligned items so that we always have dedicated funds to make sure that we have money to train our teachers.
Well, Marie, we have two large segments here, the green and the light blue.
Yes.
What are they? I can't see them.
The green is pupil services, and the blue...
Is the high school?
Is the high school.
Okay.
The two largest chunks, high school and special, and pupil services. Again, when you take a look at pupil services, that's why we're trying to bring more programs home and rebuild that, because we can do it more cost-effectively. When we send a student to an outside school, we pay for busing, as well as we can't control the cost of the schools, and I do think that the programs we're building in-house are much stronger and better for students.
Should that be broken down further, then, like pupil services being handled locally versus?
Tom could do that for you, but I like to see the overview of the budget, so I know what I'm dealing with, so that we try and move it that way. But we do have that data internally. That's where we're able to track the $750,000 savings, because Tom has a good handle on that. And John, if you wanted details, I'm sure Tom would be happy to go through it with you. Okay.
So this, in this, is this a good time to ask questions, or should I wait for your question?
Go right ahead.
Is he ever going to have a budget presentation? All right, so with regard to contracted services and pupil services, on John's question, what's the 300, why are we reducing 349? Is that because we're bringing students back here? $349,000 reduction in contracted services?
Yeah, a big portion of that is associated to reduction in special ed costs for tuitions for out-of-district students. Enough to get into the details to give you the exact numbers of what each areas, you know, contributing to the overall piece, but I think there was some reduction in legal. I'll have to go back and look at it for you.
But overall, I mean, those are students that are either graduating out or they're coming back into district?
Correct.
Yes.
Coming back in. So that's a success, right?
It's a huge success. It's been a five-year plan. Yeah, Sue did an excellent job at building programs so that our students could stay here. Mark's continuing that work, but it's been a huge success, I would say, of the entire team. It's also a credit to the principals who've embraced these programs and made them part of this school so that students feel very welcome. So budget reductions. Whenever we look at the budget, we say, okay, if we can't come up with 1.6 million, we can only ask for 750, where are we going to find the money? We've agreed that we're going to cut 4.7 teachers, we're going to cut an administrator, 2.5 support staff, cut back on legal costs, we'll look at attrition due to retirements, and again, we'll hope to gain more funds from special ed restructuring.
Okay. Where are those 4.7 teachers coming from?
They are right now from across the district. They're not definite just yet. We have not spoken to people, and the team's working on that, but we're committed to coming up with 4.7 people.
Seven in total, we're looking at 8.3 total FTEs?
Yes, we are.
And what impact will that have on class size?
We're trying to keep class size the same, but we're talking to the team on different strategies for how we might regroup or restructure things so that we can have these cost savings with minimal impact to kids. We're hoping to maintain the same class sizes that we have right now.
Okay. Who's the administrator?
I'm not able to talk about that yet. Okay. But we will be cutting in administrative position. Budget additions. There are no new programs. I repeat, no new programs. We do have contractual obligations. The paraprofessionals, one of the things we have had more students moving into the district, is students developing needs that need paraprofessionals, so we've had to put seven in the budget. We've increased the high school's special education teacher because the program there was growing. We have speech, we need an increase of .6 speech assistant, but we'll be able to take some, a reduction in the consulting line in order to increase that. We have more students, English language learners, so we've had to increase teaching .4. We are hiring an academic tutor to balance off the staffing at the elementary schools, and we are continuing to work on curriculum development. We need money for professional development, as well as materials. Again, school committee knows that we're always looking at end-of-the-year funding, and people say, oh, you always have a surplus, but that's always where we go to. For example, at the end of this year, we're looking at possibly discovery ed for social studies, we're looking at high school math books, we're looking at high school history books, social study books, and am I missing something? Elementary math, thank you very much. So we have a lot that we're really working on, and we're fortunate that Tom managed such a great budget that we're able to capture some of that money at the end of the year. I think school committee is aware, each time we're looking at buying new textbooks, it can cost us anywhere from $50,000 upwards. They're extremely expensive. So we've been working closely. Tom Landers has done a great job of working with his department heads to say, listen, this is the year we think we're going to have money. So when Tom and Meredith Loughlin were coming about the changes that needed to happen in the math curriculum, we made it a priority this year for the math department to get together, to look at the curriculum, redo it, and get that request in by the end of the year so that we're able to move that program forward and not worry about where we'll get the money for textbooks next year.
So we're looking at a total net increase of 1.7 FTEs? Is that correct? That sound right to anybody?
Well, it's a little higher than that, based on current FTEs in the budget, that we've had to add some this year and deleted some from this year's budget. So the net, I think, is a 3.5 total.
Okay. I think it's important that, you know, obviously, we highlight that those seem like a lot of positions we're adding, but we're making a lot of reductions on the other side, so to net out at three and a half, give or take, and come in under level service, that's pretty good, right? I mean...
Absolutely. If you go back to the last slide, Michael, your points were all taken. Take a look at, we have 4.7 teachers, 1.0 administrator, and then it's support staff. But if you look at the additions, paraprofessionals and speech assistants are not as expensive as the people that we're cutting. So we're continually trying to do this to balance the budget, to bring forward a responsible budget for the community.
I don't want to get us too far off track, but I do find it a little bit interesting that we're adding so many paraprofessionals back after making reductions over the last couple of years as a response to district community partners. So are we moving away from that methodology entirely?
We had a discussion in administrative team this morning, because as new students come into district or problems arise, we tend to still go to that model to look at that. One of the things that we talked about and will continue to talk about is when you do placement in the spring for the fall, if you know someone that could use a little bit of support, let's talk about a teacher who already has a paraprofessional and putting a couple of kids in that room. I think that when the district community partners came in, we had a model that everybody got a one-to-one. You just can't afford it. Because what happens if you keep doing one-to-one with powers, and you have to take away teachers and increase class size. So we're looking to share more of these paraprofessionals. If a student comes in mid-year or there's been a crisis, we can't always control that, but sometimes it's a temporary hold while we develop a program around it, or we see if they belong in a program. But we are, we're cognizant of that and working on it all the time. We did notice that, too. We said, that's a large increase what's happening, so.
I don't see adjustment counselors on the additions. Did you make a decision on that?
We made a decision not to add them. We took a look, and we looked at all the things that were in front of us and had long, hard discussions, and while the principals would have preferred to have them, at this time, we can't afford to do it. What we did decide to do is to do some staff development around having our adjustment counselors, our guidance counselors, and our social workers, and we're going to bring in training to talk about how to see kids in larger groups. I took a look at some of the data, and we're doing a lot of our work with kids one-on-one instead of small group, and we're finding that the schools that are having the greatest success with meeting the demands are actually seeing kids in lunch bunch or groups like that. So our next step is to try and do some staff development and change the model of how we're providing the service, and then we'll revisit that question again. I know for Chris Collins, it was a high priority, but it was a matter of what we needed to prioritize in the budget.
Well, currently, where do we have adjustment counselors? Between, you know, what are the allotments? Because I know, we know from Blueberry that they don't have a full timeline.
Right. Wool Swamp is 1.0 because they have the behavioral program, and so .5 goes to behavioral program, .5 goes to regular education. Blueberry is .5, Centra is .5. The middle schools have a .5 adjustment counselor plus a 1.0 guidance counselor, so it's a little bit different that model. And then the high school has 1.5 as well.
And the principals are willing, without having the increases that they asked for?
I think, I think Chris would prefer to have it. He's been very clear about that. At Williams, he'd prefer to have the adjustment counselor. I think that when we sat down in the room, the elementary people had to make decisions on what they want to cut or what they wanted added. And I think my response was, if there's something you'd like to give up to put in the adjustment council, you can do that, and people prefer to leave the staffing the way it was. Okay.
And I think one other point, Marie, quickly. You had commented about using end-of-year funds for textbooks and extra materials. I think we need to be clear that we do not intentionally budget more than what we need in order to get those at the end of the year. The end-of-the-year funds are simply savings, whether through attrition or through legal fees that were not used, or savings that we found along the way by which we can purchase it. It's not that we're planning, you know, or padding our budget so that we can get those textbooks or, you know, accessories as we go along.
We have a $33 million budget, and a good budget should have 1% to 3% of flex in there, and Tom does an outstanding job. If we did not have someone managing a budget as well as he does, we'd be in trouble. This is the time of year we begin to look and say, okay, was he right where someone's built in? But if we did not have some flexibility in there, we'd be going back to the town. Prior to my arrival, there used to be a fall meeting as well, where people would go back and ask for special ed funds because the budget wasn't managed in such a way that there was a little flex in there. We build based on best practices. We build with a little bit, because you can't predict utility, you can't tell when the special ed costs, they can go up at any time. You don't know when someone moves in, that could cost you $100,000. So Janet, you're right, but I think a well-developed budget has that 1% to 3% of flexibility, and Tom's right on the mark with it.
Absolutely.
I think it's important also to note that we're not the only entity in town that has additional money at the end of the year. That every single department has money that they turn back to the town, including ours. So it's not, you know, I know that there's certain elements in the community that sometimes like to point fingers at us about some of the additional money we have at the end of the year, but every department has attrition, every department has costs that don't, you know, that don't always end up being what they projected. It's just the natural flow of municipal budget.
And they're very valid points, because if you're not dealing with the school budget, I'm not sure you're aware how fluid it always is. There are students that move in and out. One special ed placement could cost $200,000. An average special ed placement might be $25,000, $30,000, so that you always have to have some room in there. But our job also is to not go to the town and say, hey, by the way, we need another half million for textbooks and computers. It's always trying to move things around to meet the needs while making sure that we're being reasonable with our requests to the town.
Absolutely.
I just want to go back to the reduction in the support staff. Are you talking about any of the additions that you might have added?
No. It would be paraprofessionals. It would be, Tom, can you answer that specifically, or?
Clerical.
Clerical, yes. Secretarial.
Not, yeah, not classroom-based.
No.
Not classroom-based, okay.
We did our best not to touch anything that would impact class size. We think class size across the board is very good right now. Students are doing well, so our class size will not change with even the reductions that we have. All right, so we went through the additions. Other budget impacts, we did reduce the kindergarten fee $250 per family. I think that we would have liked to have offered free kindergarten, but you can see by the numbers of the whole budget, if we did level service at 1.6 million and then also added another $300,000 for full-day kindergarten, the budget would have been something that the town couldn't sustain. We are continuing to try and reduce that cost because we do understand that many of our residents would appreciate paying a far less in tuition. There was a reduction in parking fees. The students brought forward a very strong case that the students who were driving to school were actually paying for the buses that other students were taking, so there was a reduction there. And we're looking at transportation fees. The committee was formed, they've done a study. We're not sure yet whether or not there'll be a reduction in transportation or even an increase, because we've heard of more parents interested in taking transportation, particularly from the Williams neighborhood. So we're doing our best to demonstrate fiscal responsibility. We're presenting to you a budget that is less than level service, but it still meets the priorities of the district. Does it meet everything that we would like? No, it doesn't. Does it provide us with enough funding to provide a quality education? It absolutely does. Again, the numbers are repeated for you, what the proposed budget is, the increase, and what the total budget increase is. Okay? We'd like to take a minute to thank everyone, residents, parents, senior citizens, staff, administrative team, select board, school committee, and students, because this really is a special district. People care about each other, they work together closely. Over our past several weeks, even negotiating with town leaders, trying to do the best for us, whether it was Steve and Crane, Paul Pesterz, or Richard Foster, they're really trying to problem-solve with us to bring forward a budget that the town can manage, but still keeps us in excellent school system. So at this point, I will take more questions if you have them. For our citizens at home that are watching, both the slideshow and the budget booklet will be posted on the district website. The budget booklet is, how many pages long?
Still 90.
91.
91.
It's a light read.
It's in compliance with the ASBO requirements for presenting all kinds of information, how your strategic goals tie in, what progress you're making, et cetera. So it's all in the budget booklet, as well as the slideshow.
All right. Any questions for any of the admin team?
So aside from an adjustment counselor, is there anything else anybody really wanted that they didn't get?
I think kindergarten and the adjustment counselors were the two biggest worries that we had about the budget.
I actually have a question on transportation, just because of that recent...
Forum?
...that I watched online.
The forum?
The forum that I watched online. So that, so how much do we pay, I guess, Tom, how much do we pay in transportation? So that, so how much do we pay, I guess, Tom, how much do we pay in transportation to be out-of-pocket paid towards buses?
It's about $200,000 out of the general fund.
And then what do people cover?
Taken about $20,000 additional in fees.
You're using round numbers, Tom, I'm impressed.
Costs over $1,000 per student right now to take the bus, and the fee is $200?
$175.
$175.
And the $300 that we would need for full-day kindergarten is from what, which fund?
The general.
The general fund as well?
Fund. Yeah. Currently, kindergarten is funded with about $275,000 expected in fees. We also have a half-day section that would have to go to full-day, which would add another .5 teacher and .5 assistant. So it'd be over $300,000 additional cost to the general fund.
Would that mean to go to half-day if, if people were opting for it?
Not necessarily, but if you offer it, I would guess most would take it, but it doesn't necessarily mean you have to provide just full-day.
And truthfully, there's a chance that we may not end up offering any half-day this coming year if every family chooses full-day.
Well, we have to make it an option.
We do. There is legislation to mandate full-day kindergarten, but that hasn't happened, and that will be discussed in the next year. Michelle, we also did look at the data about how the half-day students were doing compared to the full-day students, and we're seeing, we're very pleased with the progress of the half-day students.
Did you feel that they were equal, you know, performing equally in terms of, I'm assuming they took Ames Web?
They did. Sue can speak to it.
Oh, yeah, let me pick it up, yeah. So they're, they just ended testing last week, but it's looking really good. Donna can speak to her half-day kindergarten. They're really, they're really doing very well. They're doing a phenomenal job.
And how are the teachers, you know, responding that are, you know, how is the full-day curriculum going? Because this is new. How are, you know, does the half-day teacher have anything to compare with, you know, just in terms of feedback that you're getting from your teachers?
Donna, can you come to a microphone please?
Sure. She's done a half-day program in the past, and she's also done a full-day program, and she's very pleased with, with the progress of the students.
In that, in the new half-day program, let's say, because I know the curriculum has changed, so she, in talking to the other teachers, she doesn't feel like hers are struggling more than the ones that are in the full-day program?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No, no, they're doing a great job.
Great.
Yeah, yeah. And again, I can get you that data once it's complete.
Utilities.
Yes.
Obviously, there's a spike in natural gas prices right now. And electric prices, huge spike in electric. What are we, I mean, are we, do we feel comfortable with where we're putting our utility costs right now, or do you think we're going to come up short?
So things have paid an increase of about $25,000 or so next year. We are seeing savings at the high school in terms of natural gas, but the electrical costs are, are going to be higher than what we currently anticipate. But across the board with the new electrical, electricity contract, and we will be entering into a new natural gas agreement for next year before the winter, I plan for an increase based on those two factors. So there is a slight increase overall to the utility lines throughout the budget. Some were reduced, like the high school electricity, natural gas line, but others, there are increases.
But I think we should also note that when you've done comparisons of the rates that we're able to negotiate through the collaborative versus the town taking on our utilities, it is, we're getting a better rate than if the town were to take over our utilities. Is that still correct?
We did look at that when we were exploring what the increase would be under a new contract, both with and without the town. And yes, it is almost comparable or a little less expensive for us, so.
Liz?
I was just looking at the school department capital project. Has this been finalized, this fire realist list that has been given to the town, and have they? I can't remember where we are in that process.
It was submitted back in the fall. A number of projects were submitted to the CPA for consideration. I don't know that I've heard.
I think they have a hearing Thursday. Their first hearing is on Thursday.
So some of them might be on the list?
For CPA funding, I don't believe any were recommended by the town manager for capital at this time. But there are a number of CPA projects, especially the ones at Center School, I believe were, will be considered by the CPA committee for funding.
Okay. None of the projects were recommended from the town manager?
Not for capital funding.
New school ones?
I don't believe so.
What did we have that could have potentially gone to capital? What page is that, Liz?
42.
So he didn't recommend the $30,000 IT project to capital?
I don't believe he did.
42.
No.
I believe the Center Stairs was being submitted to CPA, Community Preservation, along with the Terrace, number eight.
What about our boiler?
I'm not sure that that got recommended with the schools considering entering, submitting an SOI, so.
It's the classic chicken and the egg, right?
Yep.
I feel like, I mean, and I don't want to rail on this for too long, but I feel like every single year, capital, for some reason, becomes a conversation about what are you going to do about your middle schools? And quite honestly, if the boiler was to fail, which I think Chris Reed told us it's probably not going to right now, but should it fail, I mean, does it really matter when we're replacing our middle schools?
No.
Okay. So that, to me, is ridiculous, and I would hope that the town manager would reconsider that.
Can I pick up on your mind? We are submitting an SOI for middle schools.
Yes, we are.
We really don't want to replace $495,000 of boilers that we're just going to carry on.
The problem is, the problem is the middle school has two boilers, and when only one is running, the temperature is in the high 50s, low 60s. So if you have a boiler that was to malfunction for an extended period of time in a cold stretch, we would be in a pickle. We, we need the two boilers running. Right now, they're both running. They have put money into repairing them, so, but it's always on our watch list. Tom, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, again, I agree with your assessment, Marie, that it could be problematic. They both aren't functioning right now, but one of them is over 20 years old, and they have concerns about, you know, sustainability long-term, which is why it's on our, the list.
Well, you know, it's, I mean, if you look at where we prioritize it, I think that we prioritize it pretty highly. It's our number-two priority after the stairs at Center, which is a safety thing. You know, ultimately, I think, I agree with you, John, that it's, you know, it becomes a conversation about throwing good money after bad. But regardless of submitting a statement of interest this year, I mean, we could get rejected. Lotho just got rejected. He saw that I was getting rejected, I mean, for several years. I mean, this could be a, this could be a 10, 15-year process for us. I don't think it will be, but it could be. And that's, you know, is, do we, I mean, at that point, when do we have this conversation? And when do we, when do we say we have to bite the bullet and this is an important thing for us to do?
I agree.
I was just, can't we use it if we purchase one, a new boiler? Why couldn't we just move it and do a new building? Why are we going to wait for the heat to die and then leave these kids in?
Out of school.
It just seems like crazy to me that we're...
I think that's a lot easier said than done.
That the answer is?
In terms of getting it to fit into the HVAC system of a brand-new building, the old, older piece of equipment has to work with all of the new components that are added in terms of an HVAC system. So I'm not saying it can't be done, I just don't know theoretically how easy and less expensive that, or savings you really get, so.
It seems like a gamble to wait this to...
Well, there's other old buildings in this town, too, that I'm sure could use a new boiler in the next seven to 10 years.
I, yeah, I agree with that.
That we could give it to after.
I mean, one of Glenbrook's boilers came from the high school, didn't it?
Yes.
So, not to dwell on capital for too long, but Kevin, on this battery power data protection system, which systems run on that? Which systems would rely on that if there was a power failure?
Currently, all of the critical communication systems and data networks would rely on that, which is why it was submitted as a potential risk. Again, we don't lose power that often, but the reality is that the current power we have in those closets is not necessarily reliable and does take away at the life of the equipment there. In addition to the fact that power does go out, communication systems, including phones, are out until power is restored.
And when you say critical systems, which, can you, can you describe a couple of those?
Phone systems would be one.
Okay.
You can't dial 911 from any of those particular phones, so, you know, the backup plan is, we have radios and fax machines on, on dedicated circuits and things like that. So it's not, it's not in the best interest of, of public safety necessarily.
And what's, what is the, let's say, for instance, we actually end up with one of these backup battery packs, how long does it last in the event of a power outage?
Those events set to run for a few hours, which is enough time to essentially clear a building of occupancy if there's an extended outage plan.
So the telephone, any public safety computers or systems that run on that either?
No. So the high school building, the public safety complex, including the town hall, and that's about it. Currently have generator power that powers the equipment during...
But it would knock their phones out?
It would knock, it would phones out at buildings that don't have any.
So the DPW, Greenwood, Community House, Town Hall?
I believe the DPW has some generator power capability now, but...
Okay. Five of our schools? Great. And they don't want that?
That's why it was submitted. It's not a, it just barely met the threshold of capital. It would not have necessarily been planned in this coming year, except for the fact that we've actually had several pieces of existing UPS systems that have failed this year. I think Chris can, Chris can tell you that the one in his office area, I'm probably just going to have to buy one separate from the project at this point, because we think we've had outages at least once a week now. And that, it takes about 15 minutes to restart, so you figure, you just can't call anybody for 15 minutes.
Right. What are we, why are we having outages, the first time hearing of it?
It's kind of old.
You don't say.
Just to put it in a nutshell for you.
Thank you.
You should see that, come over sometime, we'll show you the closet.
I'm going to come.
Wool Swamp and Blueberry, the systems that are in place, were put in when those buildings were renovated. We're now well beyond 10 years of that. I'm surprised some of those things are even still functional quite quickly, so. We, we repurposed all the ones that were in the high school, the old high school building, we had put out in other buildings, and those, so those are, you know, all the equipment is, is still live.
So what you're saying is there's a reason we put this as the number-three important project on our list?
I guess.
Behind the two that actually have, like, either you can't open school or we're going to get sued because someone fell down the stairs? This is the third one, right?
Because there are public safety implications, yes. I mean, it's also our communication systems. You guys know that we rely for the majority of our teaching and learning now on, on resources that are, you know, require computers or technology. So teachers, you know, usually have backup plans in mind. Disruption to the educational environment can be huge if there are any kind of power disruptions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The fire alarm system at Center always seems to be on the top of their list, but never makes it to this list. Is anyone prioritized?
These back, the ones behind in the back page, they're not prioritized, right?
Right.
I think it was, we were, we were going to put it on the list, but I guess there was, we fixed the problem, essentially.
Right now?
Right now. It was, it was an issue of sensors in the existing fire alarms, and we took them, we replaced, they turned it to a $10,000 fix instead of a $100,000 fix, essentially. Thanks to some injury of the DPW.
They haven't been going off anymore. When do MCAS start?
But that's the reason.
So when it goes off, Katie, they'll be calling you?
Yeah.
That'll be fine, though.
That's, that's the reason that didn't make it onto our list this year. But it's probably, at this point, it's what, 16 years old? So it's probably something that we're going to probably replace in the next four years, give or take.
It just doesn't seem like a very long time.
But if you think about it...
Safety seems important.
It's incredibly important. And if you, it doesn't seem like a long time, but I, I believe a new system would be zoned. And right now, the system's not zoned, except for Building A and Building B. So. And I think when one of them goes off, you have to walk around and find which one's going off, like the old high school. Or Williams?
There's a central crank in the office now.
There is.
Yeah, so you don't have to wander.
At Center?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
Is that true?
Things have been much better since they replaced the sensors. That was what ultimately was causing, remember, all those evacuations? It's been much better. They have had problems, but they were for causes. So we're watching it. It is in the budget, but right now, it's not a major concern.
Yeah, it was, we, during our meeting with Chris Reed, we felt internally comfortable taking it off the list.
How do you get things on that list?
Well, Katie and Liz lobbied to get a playground on there, so.
I know, Janet and I have joked around about grass at Wool Swamp and Blueberry.
Yeah, well, that's because you got yours.
It should be on there.
I'm just, because Janet and I kind of half joking and half seriously...
Commiserate about the lack of grass.
Discuss the grass.
Grass and the dust bowls that are...
At Wool Swamp and Blueberry.
...respective elementary schools.
I guess my response to that would be, you know, next year, as we're going through the capital process, add it to the list. Yeah, they're on there.
Playground. Synthetic material.
Material, yeah, that's for, that's for an actual place.
I would think that's the stuff underneath the playscape. I'm looking for the grass that kids take a soccer ball on.
Oh, yeah, we do that.
You'd have to go to Center for that.
I know.
I, I'd support us making a concerted effort to move that up the list next year. I think it's making, it's going to make a big difference at Center, and we, that did fall off the radar screen, because Wool Swamp was on there for years, and I don't know why it wasn't on our top three or five list this year. And I know Blueberry needs attention, too.
I don't want to dwell on this IT project or the boiler replacement, but...
You've said that.
I know, but I keep coming back to it. Am I incorrect in assuming that the town increased their total capital allocation for their proposed FY '16 budget to the full 2% and then some?
I believe they added an additional half a percent, so it was a 2.5% for FY '16.
And two mission-critical items didn't make that list.
That's my understanding. I can verify with the town manager on that.
My question, I should say, when Stephen called me to talk about the projects, I'm not sure his final recommendations are done because of the CPA pending projects, because I believe there's also some Chapter 90 funding that could potentially take care of some DPW requests. So I think the situation right now is that pending Chapter 90 and CPA decisions, there may or may not be more money for him to recommend. So to his credit, I think he's waiting to see.
Okay, I'll give Stephen a break.
With other methods.
But I will say that Richard Foster has been pretty clear that they're going to receive some additional Chapter 90 money, but they're not going to reduce their capital allocations. They want, he said that's, he quote-unquote said that's working backwards, so, not to go after him, but that's, there, so that's, yeah, so we're, I'll, I'll give Stephen a break for like a week. All right, I'm done.
Are you done?
I think so, I think I'm done.
Thanks, Steve.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question about the adjustment counselor. Positions, is it possible to go to half-time guidance counselor and full-time adjustment counselor? Is that, or would that just sort of put the needle to the other side? Like kind of the seesaw?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be laughing, I'm just looking at our middle school principal's facial expressions.
Nicole was a little bit more expressive than Chris was.[1722.51]
Within...
He's pretty good at keeping his tone.
Yeah. Within my conversations with people and expectations, I think we need more professional development in the area. And one of the questions that we had earlier was, what is the responsibility of each of those positions? And we went back and looked at certifications and descriptions and talked to other districts. They're pretty close, so I think we need to do more professional development around what the job is and how we can better utilize those. I don't think it would matter if you switched the roles. I think particularly at the middle school, they need to be overlapping. You need to be seeing groups of kids. You need to be responding to crises.
Yeah, I guess I'm, you know, and I see the need to have professional development, not just for adjustment counselors, but across the board, too. But also, I feel like we could do a lot of in-house professional development with a full-time adjustment counselor.
Well, Sue also brought up a suggestion, which we need to talk more about, which is you can, some districts bring in psychologists and give them a place to work, but insurance companies pay for it. The parent can have the child serviced while in school and become an insurance. So we're looking at other models that might supplement this, but I really think our first go-around needs to be staff development to really look at this and talk to our counselors. The first step will be looking at the special program survey, and then the second is how we reach the kids in the most stressed classes, because the most stressed right now, the fifth grade and the 11th and 12th graders, according to the data from the kids. But I think if we can do more around talking about being proactive, what kind of groups we have, how many are in a group, how do you get to see the kids, I think there's more we can do with what we have. And if that doesn't work, I think it needs to remain a high priority for next year. But I would like to try to look at some staff development and using the staff we have in a different model.
I wasn't aware that we, when they're .5 at each school, that one adjustment counselor is servicing an elementary school and one is, and the same one that's servicing the elementary is servicing middle school, which to me sounds like two different groups of kids. You know, a sixth, seventh, and eighth grader has very different issues than a one through, K through five, and I just didn't know why we were having one person doing K through eight when we could, if we're sharing, why wouldn't the two elementary schools share one and the two middle schools share one?
Well, the model was set up before I came, but I will tell you, it works very effectively. I could see doing that either way, but the continuity, the person who goes to the middle school knows those kids intimately, has family history, has connections with the elementary, so that it can really be family servicing as well as following a child for eight years. So it's working, believe it or not, to have somebody who sees them in elementary also see them in middle. I also see the skill set of our adjustments counselors is extremely strong, and they're able to successfully work with kids at both levels.
But it's elementary and high school.
Central school shares with the high school, right? And that adjustment counselor does a lot of the women's group, so the girls work with the high school, so.
And then Blueberry goes to Central Middle School.
Blueberry goes to Glennbrook.
Right. But only half the kids at Blueberry go, like...
Yeah, they can't follow all the kids, because half of them are...
Right.
Williams.
Well, and I think, you know, I think the biggest issue with sharing is that if there's a crisis at the school that that adjustment counselor is sharing, then those kids that were counting on seeing that adjustment counselor, who are in need of seeing that adjustment counselor, are canceled on because they have to leave. And I think that happens a lot, and I think, you know, we're looking at our high schoolers with the problems that they have and what is being reflected on the surveys, but we should be reaching them at a young level as often as we can. And I mean, with the stress that they've got from the curriculum getting harder and just the kids' needs, I was surprised to find out that we didn't have full-time adjustment counselors at every school, so I just...
But it is interesting, the stress is fifth grade, low stress in the middle schools, and 11th and 12th grade. So there are crises, there are definitely things that we need to look at, and I hear loudly and clearly, but I know that you have a fifth grader. So it was interesting that the fifth grader, the fifth grade showed up on the high-stress list. That says to me, we have to do a better job with transitions, that we're worrying our fifth graders. When they get to the sixth grade, they flourish. They're embraced. But we also notice in the IEPs, more kids are, the teachers are asking for more services as well as the parents for a fifth grader going to sixth, so that we have some work to do around that. But I don't know, I think if we could see more kids in groups and be proactive around what we're doing, we're reactive right now. We wait for it to happen. There are, I think the counselor at Glennbrook does lunch bunches and sees groups, so there are some models out there that I think are working that we need to look at.
I've seen those at the elementary level as well, where...
Yeah, I think...
The lunches.
But I think if we can get all of our key people in a room and talk about this and look at the model, look at our stressors and where kids need it, and see if we can come back with a better model, I think that might work. It really came down to whether or not to take out, to dismantle the programs we started about getting intervention. It came down to whether or not to increase class size. It came down to whether or not to take out the wellness programs at the high school. We also could have taken out a math teacher at the high school, but we just increased programming courses. We've built it up over the past couple of years. We now have four programming courses. We're talking about going to online learning. So every place we went to make a cut that we could put in an adjustment counselor, we were going to have ramifications. I think that we're more severe than saying, okay, let's see if we can restructure this and do this in a better way. We seriously considered it. How many times do we have it in? That we kept going back and forth and saying, this isn't in the best interest of all the kids. If we had the money, I certainly would support it 100%, but I think for me, the decision came down to, can we try doing this model in a different way and still help all of the kids and not impact our programs across the board? It was a tough decision.
Between that and full-day kindergarten.
Mm-hmm. I wish we had money for all of it. I do.
I have one final question.
I doubt that.
No, I do. I only have one final question. It's for Kevin. No, you'll like it. It's fine. It's a softball. It's a softball. What year are we in of our lease with Apple?
We have one, we have, I believe next year is the last payment.
So are we going to, at the end of next year's payment, are we going to turn the computers in and exchange out the fleet?
The decision will be discussed by the bounty committee, which is reforming this year.
Okay. All right, that's all. Great. Just looking at the budget, you know? Told you, it's softball.
All right, anyone else? I know this under the table is fine. Anyone else?
Can I say one more thing about the adjustment counselors? I have applied for a grant with some other districts. No guarantees around the grants, but it's $100,000, and it has to do with supporting kids in that area, so I'm hoping that we will see some payback from that. There are five other communities. The other communities are Holyoke, Agwam, Ludlow, Long Meadow, and there's one more. So this, I don't think so. So the socioeconomic factor is really good for getting the grant, because usually that's what holds us back from getting them, but it will be $100,000 shared between the districts. So I am trying to find grant money that we could support kids in that area, so whatever I see, I will apply for, but we have one out right now.
I like the idea of the groups and the proactive. I just don't know that with the setup, that they would have the time to do it. You know, I think I had inquired about that prior to this year even, and it just wasn't, you know, she's stretched so thin, at least at Blueberry, that would be hard to...
Well, Diane is setting up the meeting for next Wednesday. We're looking at the special programs survey. I'm going to have all the key players in the room. We're going to have a long discussion over how we can help kids with mental health issues and that, so I'll have more information. But I don't know that we've ever had our adjustment counselors, our guidance counselors, our assistant principals and principals all in the room talking about this. So it'll be a big meeting, but it will be a good one.
I think that, I was at that special programs meeting where we kind of reviewed those survey results, and I know you'll share more probably later, but I think that was a good, kind of an eye-opener for the district in general to see where the kids need some extra support. So I can, I trust you going forward with the administration and sharing those results and then kind of focusing on those key areas that the kids are struggling.
Yeah, we agreed to administrative team, the key service providers, get input. Shelley will bring the data, and then we'll come back to school committee once the internal people have had a chance to look at it, give me feedback, confirm what they say. But the responses were very good. We had a great response from key players, both parents, not both, but parents, teachers, and students, so it's going to be very helpful. But I will report back to the school committee, but I think administration needs to see it first in our mental health providers.
I'm waiting. I figure you have another comment.
No, I'm comfortable.
You're good? Anyone else?
I know how to contact Tom after if I have more questions.
All right. Well, I would just like to say thank you to you and the whole administrative team who has put countless hours of blood, sweat, and tears into this presentation and revised and revised and revised yet again for us with both the booklet and the slideshow, so it is much appreciated. I think it's very thorough. I think it's very explanatory in, you know, how we're prioritizing, you know, given the constraints, you know, and trying to collaborate with the town, so.
I'd like to take a chance to commend the administrative team that here, and we don't often get to do this publicly, but I don't think people understand the agony that goes into preparing a budget, because you have to give and take all the time. But we have exceptional leaders that really put their kids first, that really come to the table. But we also have administrators that are able to understand a pre-K through 12 district, and it's very rare in my lifetime, I've worked with a team that really is a team, and they're a pleasure to work with, but they really worked hard in bringing forward the information. You know, Tom and Sue put it together, but I think we have an exceptional leadership team that really does best with the kids, which is why pre-K through 12 kids are having such a great experience.
Absolutely. So not only thank you to your team, but thank you to our other team that's out there. We will be having a meeting Monday. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I guess...
No, that's okay.
I'm curious about the school lunches and what they're costing us.
The fund balance report, which is what I assume you're looking at...
Yes.
Is as of December of 2014, so it only has a portion of the year's activity so far. We do anticipate that, we are tracking on a deficit, but it is lower than what is, was budgeted. Right now, extrapolating it out, it'd probably be around $40,000 to $50,000 for the year.
Which is, I, is huge.
Huge.
That's much lower than...
I mean, not a great thing to lose money, and I know I want to clarify that, but I think it's important that the community know and that everybody on this board know that when we were under contract with a different company, we were losing upwards of $100,000 over the course of the year. When we went out to bid and we, you know, chose Whitson's, and I know Janet was on that committee, who else was on that committee?
Liz.
Liz was on that committee. We, you know, we chose a company that produced a higher-quality product, that was going to make the effort to invest in the elementary schools, which is where we were really losing money, and it was becoming this system-wide, you know, they're not doing elementary schools, so they're not going to start doing high schools sort of mentality. So to reel this deficit into a projected $50,000 is huge. That just means, I mean, participation's up, you know, it's an incredible thing, so I can't say enough about the program that they've designed and, you know, finance subcommittee watching those numbers, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
And Tom really scrutinizing every receipt.
He does. Last year, wasn't it something around 80?
80, yeah.
So for you to predict 40 to 50 right now is a very big improvement, so I'm...
Huge.
Absolutely. It's definitely going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good trend.
It's a better loss.
It's a better loss.
I like the better way of breaking even clause.
All right, so our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 9th, at 7:00 PM. That will be a public hearing on our budget, so the information, as Murray stated at the beginning, will be placed online on our website if you would like to look at either the slideshow or the budget book in its entirety. And then we do have a snow date scheduled for Thursday, the 12th, at 7:00 PM, in case we are canceled for Monday night because of snow.
For Thursday?
For Thursday, the 12th, and at which time, if there's no further discussion, we'll be voting to adopt this budget as well. So I thank you all. If you have any questions or concerns, please come out Monday night, and we will be happy to listen.
Motion to adjourn.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Bye.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. We'll see you Monday.